The weight of that authority that they would lean on you, or that we would, we would be a community that honors you in all that we do, knowing that you will bring prosperity to the coast. God help us to receive your correction, to follow you with humility. And pray for this meeting today and for this community. Jesus name, amen.
Amen.
I need a motion to amend the agenda. Motion.
Second.
Okay, the first and second order accepting requests of Samantha Walker to be considered as Harrison County's representative for the Mississippi Deep Sea Fishing Rodeo, and order accepting requests of Emily Moran to be considered for Harrison County's representative for the 2024 Mississippi Deep Sea Fishing Rodeo. Have a motion and second, any discussion?
Motion.
Discussion. So these are two girls asking to be in?
Yes, and there's one already on the agenda that we're adding this to number eighty.
And then how do we decide which one we choose? Because we don't know them yet, we just have the applications. Usually there's just one and we are happy, but there's three now and I don't know.
I think that's completely up to the board of the majority, who you want to.
When is the rodeo? When do we?
July fourth in the summer or something like that.
Yeah, Matt, the table is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody just get to it. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
That was just to amend the agenda.
Correct. All right, item one. I need an order appointing Vice President Nathan Barrett as acting president in the absence of President Latner.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. We have a public hearing to receive comments on the tax increment plan for Thomasville Medical Park in Biloxi. Are there any comments? If you want to come forward and address them.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. Lawrence Lyons with Urban Development. I'm here on behalf of the developers for the Thomasville Medical Park to be constructed at the Wool Market exit. Just briefly, a little bit about the project again. This project is estimated right now at fifty million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They'll begin construction on the first phase hopefully by the end of the summer, subject to obviously this going through. The city did adopt this TIF plan last week as requested, and we have advertised this public hearing as required by the statute, we have proofed publication with the clerk's office. The project will generate approximately two hundred jobs when it's said and done. Right now, we're estimating about a hundred to a hundred and twenty jobs. Seventy-five percent of this project will be a retail center with a hotel, full-size grocery store, and some housing, specialty housing for the medical staff. The first phase of the project will be a twelve million dollar ambulatory center and medical offices that should employ between fifty and eighty physicians as a project for the first part of it. As you know, with the taxing of finance plan, the county is not pledging any of its good faith and credit. You're not guaranteeing or obligating any of the tax base. You're only pledging taxes that are created by the project within the district that's established through the TIF plan. And so you cannot spend any of, any public money on this whatsoever. Even the advertisement for this public hearing will be reimbursed to the county, and you'll send that bill over to the city who will administer it. And when the bonds are issued, the city will pay back all the public costs associated with it. And then the balance of that money would be paid to the developer in exchange for the public infrastructure. This is for things like streets, curb gutter, utility connections, that type of thing. And with that, I can take any questions that you may have.
Did we get the, that word struck?
Yeah, we got the word struck. It's still in a draft form, so they're just striking it.
I have a question for the board. I'm sorry, I should have brought this up ahead of time. In the past, we've had issues with when they represent, and not you, but anyways, represent and provide two hundred jobs. There has not been a mechanism to require the party to owe TIF bonds to report that, which I'll agree to a, as additional to report to the board, I guess, in five years.
Yeah.
Or every year, or have the board like that. And this has nothing to do, has to do entirely different project where we run into that problem of not being able to. What happens is, you know, first, as you mentioned, the grocery store, which made it pop in my head, you lease or sell the grocery store to somebody else, and there's no requirement to, for them to report the jobs to show that the benefit of the two hundred jobs is coming to the citizens of the county. And so if it's any of that language, generally they include it as a covenant on the property or as part of the leases you do to other people.
Well, this, I, and I'm familiar with what you're talking about on the industrial tax abatement, that's a requirement, it's job creation. The TIF plan doesn't require it statutorily, but there's nothing unreasonable about one of that. And I would put it in the security reimbursement agreement, which the city will be drafting between the developer and the city as a condition to issuing the bond in the first place. And so it really is no issue on this. In fact, we're meeting with Peter at ten thirty, and I will convey that you would like to have that report back to this board.
Again, that's why I said it had nothing to do with y'all. Entirely different project where that issue came up. And we found a mechanism to make it reported, but really where the breakdown comes is when you lease it to somebody else or sell a portion, an out parcel to somebody else, and there's no requirement for them to report the jobs.
Right.
And I agree, there's no requirement of jobs, but that is a basis for agreeing to the TIFs is that you're going to create jobs.
Now, I agree, and it's really not an issue because the bonds will only be issued after the development's built, after the assessor assesses it, and because the city is pledging sales tax, they actually have twelve months of actual retail sales. So the jobs will be absolutely established prior to any bonds being issued anyhow, so it's just a reporting requirement at that point.
It's just a little different. So I, with that, provides a, I think, hopefully the board will agree with that. Reports from time to time are able to ask for.
And we, and we do appreciate and recognize that we've asked the county to pledge up to seventy-five percent of the abhorrent tax, which is more than your standard for what you've done in the past on TIS, but this is an exceptional project, and it's over fifty million through all phases of development, and it is a substantial project. It's not like, you know, the hotel projects and things that I've brought to you before. So we do appreciate it. Right now, the estimate on that infrastructure is close to nine million, and based on the county participating at seventy-five percent and the city doing the hundred percent of their abhorment and up to fifty percent of the rebate and sales tax, the maximum bond right now, based in today's market value, is about three point eight million. So they're, they're still carrying the lion's share of the cost of that infrastructure they're turning over, and that's why we were asking for twenty-five percent more than typical for Harrison County. It's just a unique project that is, has bigger economic ramifications for the whole area. We expect additional developments to occur.
All right, with that being said, we need a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the tax increment financing plan for Thomasville Medical Park. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Have a first and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Need a motion to recognize Patrick Bingle as the two thousand twenty-four recipient of MAS County Employee Scholarship for Harrison County?
Motion.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Patrick here? Not, I'll take it. Need a motion to recognize Patrick Bingle as the two thousand twenty-four recipient of MAS County Employee Scholarship awarded by the Mississippi Association of Supervisors and the Harrison County Board of Supervisors, awarded this first day of May two thousand twenty-four, and be the third day of June two thousand twenty-four. Congratulations. Have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to recognize Leo Fernandez with New Jern LLC to discuss healthcare plans offered for the county and its employees.
Motion.
Second.
My name is Garrett Hartley, and this is my business partner, Brian Fassbender. We are in partnership with Leo as well as Capstone Health.
Is that on the bench?
Yeah, I'll be real quick. This is a little bit different than my last job, other than whenever I had shoulder pads and a helmet when I was kicking for the Saints back in two thousand nine. I think we're coming up on our fifteen-year anniversary, but I think if I would have missed that kick, I probably would have been hiding out somewhere in Texas, so I'm glad things worked out in our favor. Imagine that eagle right there, kind of looks like, you know, a Florida eagle in some regard. But that being said, we're here today actually to talk to you all about a health and wellness plan that has been adopted by several other government municipalities and other states. One being that this is not an insurance play as far as benefits anymore. This is more of a financial play for the county themselves to be able to have retention to acquire funds on an annual basis for the county itself, as well as the employees that they have working for the county more importantly. This is a, you know, a section one twenty-five pre-tax plan that's going to be implemented. More importantly, this will not disrupt or, you know, replace any major medical plan that has currently been adopted by the county. This is nothing to do, once again, with the insurance. This is going to be the financial play. This is going to be available at zero net cost, so it's not just a savings for the county, an average of five to six hundred dollars per employee on an annual basis. While each employee is going to be able to have a take home of a thousand dollars to twelve hundred dollars on an annual basis on average. Once again, there is zero net cost to adopt this on the county side, as well as employer is one hundred percent participation. Moving forward and brought to light, you know, especially throughout the pandemic, virtual health became kind of known, if I'm not mistaken. And the power behind that is, with Capsone, is we have the ability to actually get through a virtual app, literally download it on your phone, you have access, not just to your primary care doctor, but doctors, not PAs, not physicians, they're all W-two employees of Amaze Health, which is powered by Capstone. So with that, you're going to have virtual ER telemed, primary care, urgent care, behavioral health. We all know that that's not talked enough about these days. Obviously dermatology, copay, these are all benefits that these employees, for themselves or anybody in their household, is able, going to be able to take home and utilize at their fingertips, whether it's once a month, whether they have kids that are sick with a hundred and three fever, that they now, if they need to go to urgent care or hospital, you know, that's the most expensive thing that an employee could do, especially being, you know, self-insured, if I'm not mistaken, going to the hospital. If they have the access to be on the phone within ten seconds to a doctor in real time, plus a biometric scan that takes thirty seconds to scan your face in real time, you're actually going to have the vital signs, health risk, health indicators, everything from be in mind to oxidative, pulse oxidation, to heart rate, as well as your blood pressure. This is all technology that's built into the app that each employee would have access to on a twenty-four-seven basis, once again, for themselves or anybody in their household. Kind of going back to how these plans initiated, when the ACA came out, all we're doing is using tax efficiencies that were put in place by that. Over a hundred and seventy school districts between Texas, Oklahoma, Missouri, as well as the Carolinas have already adopted this. I know that I'm bringing this on to Louisiana as well, throughout the schools. My mom's a special ed teacher in Texas for over thirty years. So making sure that the employees are really the ones getting taken care of here. I know back in the day, this used to be utilized, once this came out with the ACA, that this was an executive bonus, and it's time that, you know, the employees of the middle class are be able to reap the benefits of this instead of the executives and CEOs of high-level companies such as Amazon, Walmart, Kawasaki, Marriott, Southwest, all which have adopted programs like this. This is times that we can reiterate this as far as the savings for the county, once again, an average of six hundred dollars plus, or per employee per year, and for those employees on now. That extra take-home pay, what we're looking at, is going to be an average of a hundred dollars a month, which they can, it's going to be not, you know, not taxed. So that's the deal, they don't have to worry about the increase, and y'all be able to give each employee basically a raise without coming out of y'all's budget on a financial burden. Y'all are going to be able to utilize this in the, you know, moving forward as kind of a recruitment tool and retention tool for the employees of the county throughout operations. What I will note is, and we'll get you some literature, or I guess that Brian already passed this out, towards the end of it, on the back page, you'll notice the IRS ruling about policies or about a health and wellness policy. Going into effect January one, there will be a hospital indemnity that has to be included. Well, Capstone's already thought about that, so now they, they do have a hospitalization plan. And once again, this will run parallel to the existing programs that are currently in place. It's not going to disrupt anything, and more importantly, there is zero net cost for yourselves as well as your employees to adopt this.
And one of the, one of the biggest things that we heard over the years in starting this is, is this legal? That's the big question. Yes, one hundred percent. We have, the past bill that just went through Congress is, part of that bill that was included with this was an IRS ruling in favor of this program. So as of two thousand twenty-four, as of June first, this is now in play and legal through the IRS rulings in Congress, and we also have the backing and working alongside of Department of Labor. So we can bring this into our county in real dollars, five hundred plus dollars per employee, money back to the county. Each employee will be enhanced around twelve hundred to nineteen hundred to two thousand dollars per employee, additional money to spend on benefits. So the idea behind this initiative of what we're doing is to bring enhanced more benefits to which I already have, and also bring some VICA tax savings to the current staff.
Right, no, that's a great point. And we start talking numbers. Now, this is ballparking with, and help me out if I'm not mistaken, roughly a thousand employees? Okay. So with a thousand employees, we're literally looking, depending on a bi-weekly or basis, but on an annual net savings, we're looking at just south of half a million dollars on an annual basis for the county, and over one point two million back to the employee, actual employees. Last time I checked, this is real money, this is available, and once again, we are utilizing things that were put in place by Congress and the ACA, and it's time that, you know, municipalities start taking advantage of this. Kind of how this looks from a start-to-finish standpoint, initially, we actually run a census, utilizing y'all's current payroll projectors. We have actually a team that's, what they do on standby all the time is help extract that data in a timely manner. From there, we're going to actually give y'all back what we call a performa, so now we're not talking ballpark numbers, these are real figures. And then eventually, the enrollment, which is an auto enrollment, we all know that the, with healthcare and then open enrollment times, certain times of the year, this can be done at any point, this is very good to know, it's not going to disrupt, you know, any type of outlook, but we're looking at about forty-five to sixty-day lead time before everything's set up and is in place. And just so y'all are aware, why issues or programs like this have not taken off in the past is there is no way to keep the employees compliant. They used to try to give out like gift cards or, hey, a little, hey, did you go to the gym, or did you, did you stop smoking? Well, there was no way to track that. But now, obviously, in two thousand twenty-four, with the Amaze Health app, everything is tracked digitally. And the biggest thing about this, this is one hundred percent reinsure, meaning there is zero risk for our clients to adopt this. If anything was to potentially get audited, backtracking over three years, Capstone has their own arrest attorneys that would step in place and cover all legal expenses, and I believe they're, I think, eighty-one or eighty-two and O right now versus IRS, so pretty good statistics, might be a little bit better than mine in NFL, I'm not quite sure. But leaving that aside, this is a real possibility for the employees to get the care that they need, and knowing that preventing healthcare is the most important thing, because in my own personal opinion, the system might be flawed, because we go when we're sick, but what can we do to prevent ourselves from getting sick in the first place? And that's the most important thing. So with that, that's what I have right now. I'm more than happy to get into, you know, more information or more detailed actual presentation more than my, my five or seven minutes allotted here. And with that, Brian, anything else?
I'm going to say one thing closing. You know, a buddy of mine, AG Crowe, spent ten years in Washington. He went up to Washington and brought this up to a bunch of guys, and, you know, Mike Johnson included, and looking over everything, all the details of the IRS rulings on, his is analysis. We're getting rid of a sick care system and actually bringing a healthcare system. And we're bringing money to the table to do it. So we got, and it's not one side of the aisle, we, that, if you look at the IRS ruling and everything signed, it's from both sides of the aisle. This is agreed on both parties to bring this to municipalities and businesses, and we're over to twenty counties in Mississippi, so we're going to be able to bring that to y'all and get this thing started with y'all.
I just have one very quick question. The whole time I was thinking, this sounds too good to be true, and then I flipped to your question and answer, and that was the first thing.
That's, that's the first one.
Is it too good to be true? And thank you for that kick in two thousand nine, you needed it. What, where is the money actually coming from? That's where I'm not understanding, is it just a tax break and that turns into cash, or how's it work?
Correct. So a lot of times, as you're focused in on, so how are we able to create this benefit? Well, if we're able to put in pre-taxed the Capstone Health and Wellness Plan, and then when we're able to put that back in on the backside, post-tax, so now what we're doing is reducing the taxable income for the employee, and so this is exactly where these savings are coming from, and even after the Capstone fee, obviously, nothing in life is free, okay? But after the fee has already been administered, the, the net savings for the county, as well as the employee, is still there and it's on a per paycheck basis, there is no reimbursement a month or two later. This is happening every paycheck, you'll start to notice the difference off your VICA payroll tax, every paycheck that goes out, and then that money will be obviously back into their account. Great question, thank you.
Thank you.
And one of the things, what Rebecca said, is we've taken off the VICA taxes and we're allowed to do it, and the IRS ruling gave us the favor, we have the whole thing entirely with the ruling. The other great part of it, as I'm going through Mississippi, going to these businesses, one thing we have is eighty-two percent of our businesses, small businesses, do not have health insurance, either the employees. So all the employees want the emergency room, which we fucking do, okay? So far, over a dozen restaurants and businesses locally in this area have already adopted this plan, and I'm proud to say that, you know, Mr. Rose at Dempsey Seafood in Kew, Mississippi, now pays twelve dollars a month with life insurance and a health policy included with a hospitalization. That's the purpose behind this, let's get everybody insured that's not insured, and let's get that eighty-two percent number in Mississippi down to thirty percent or less, and it's possible with this program. That's why I'm proud of this program.
Can I ask you a question, because I think I'm just confused a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Because I understand what happens, what really is happening is you're taking part of the income out and there's a deduction against your federal income tax, which then reduces the liability to the county, because it's not having to match those VICA, right?
Correct.
Correct, yes.
That's where the benefit to the county comes from, it reduces the federal contributions that we have to make by whatever. And then that money that's deducted comes off your income, so it's, I don't want to say tax, it comes off your income, goes into an account that the employee can access to pay for wellness.
Well, actually, at this point, with the new ruling, they can just take that money home to help pay for groceries, it doesn't have to be administered back into.
So they just get, they can take the money.
Correct, if they, so this is a hundred percent, you know, they don't, do not have to participate in the plan. They can either take home the money, they can have options, they can obviously get benefits, we can have option B.
So I'm just curious where the money goes to the employee joins this plan.
Correct.
And I'm looking at your pages.
Yes.
This money that's in the right-hand column, is it going to go to some account they can access?
Correct, that, well, it's actually going to be on their paycheck, but it's not just an account.
So it goes back into their paycheck?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, with that new IRS ruling, it changed the whole thing, because that's the way most companies in the state, I'm not mentioning states, but it has been in play, but they, they put that new.
The rule that they qualify for, that.
So, yeah, no, that's a great question. So they're a W-two employee, and they have to have more than thirty hours a week.
Okay.
I know, it, once, once again, it, yeah, it does sound too.
More than thirty?
Thirty or more, yes.
At least thirty hours a week.
At least thirty. Yes, at least thirty.
Thirty or more.
Yeah, W-two and thirty hours a week, yes, sir.
So their paycheck's going to go up, now that's allowed?
Yes, it is. So in the past, what they had to do is, well, they wouldn't actually see an increase on their take-home pay, the net would actually remain the same. However, with this new IRS ruling, it's actually extra take-home pay because they don't have to spend it on supplemental benefits.
So what is a claim payment of a thousand and ten dollars issued, what does that mean?
All right, so if you notice, twelve hundred dollars is taken out prior, and then now a thousand and ten is put back in. So that hundred and ninety dollars is the Capstone fee that's being administered to power, you know, the, the doctors, you know, life, electric, the whole, and that actually brought me to another point, Mr. Tim. All the doctors that Amaze uses are all contracted in W-two employees, they're not out for hire. So they take their time with their patient and they start with them, they finish with them from start to finish and follow up.
So it's going to cost the patient a hundred and ninety dollars, one place to have access to.
Correct, but they're actually, that's, yes, there is that fee, but they're actually going to be noticing the actual take-home and benefit.
Right, they're giving benefit, I'm just trying to figure out what they, what y'all do. There's an app that they, that hundred and ninety dollars, what, they're going to be able to access an app to ask questions, I got a cold, my throat's hurting, that kind of thing?
Actually, Tim, to correct that a little bit real quick, that hundred and ninety dollars actually going back to the employee, that's their money to spend. There's a fee, a small fee, about thirty-five dollars, it's still assessed in the fee, an administration fee, but most of that money, you see the differences, that's the money that's going to the employee to spend for additional benefits. Just like with people at Dempsey, they had two hundred and seventy-eight dollars subsidies that they can use to spend how they like.
Additional benefits, they can spend however they want.
That's correct, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, we put, we put this in play in about a hundred accounts already, and Walmart's one of them. Walmart already utilizes it, and Sam's utilizes it, McDonald's, a major, Kawasaki, we have hundreds of accounts that are good references that are using it already.
We won't accuse Walmart of being dumb.
And, you know, about a month ago, I was actually in the sub-regional meeting for the superintendents in Louisiana, and I was invited to speak at their state conference here in the middle of June out in Lake Charles. This is also going to be implemented across Mississippi schools, but now, knowing that we can utilize this for government municipalities is why we're here in front of you today.
Okay, so the county would enter into a contract with Capstone?
Yes. And keep in mind, this is on a monthly basis, this is not an annual contract, so this is going to be month to month.
It didn't work, but it canceled.
Absolutely. But y'all start to see the savings from the very first paycheck that this.
So first of all, as county government, we have to use a state-approved cafeteria provider, and the county has chosen Colonial Insurance. All of the employees, pretty much most of the employees are on the cafeteria plan, so they're already seeing the savings, which means more money, take-home money. That is something that we have the broker of Cadence Insurance, and they present the different options to the board each open enrollment. So that is something that the county employees are already taking advantage of.
Yeah, and that, that program is actually our program, we work with Caps, Colonial.
Okay.
Tim Arnold's the owner of it, is part of that, and then the gentleman that signed under us is with Colonial.
Warren Arday.
We already work with those guys.
Okay.
It's actually, y'all, in a reimbursement plan, we're going to be updating the plan that y'all currently have with this in play. I've already been in talks with Tim Arnold and everything with Colonial Life, so they're very well aware of it, and with Cadence, we can actually go sit with Cadence and bring them on, on the program. We, we don't own us at the company, so we can bring it to them directly. So we can sit with.
But the employees are already getting the savings that you were talking about.
It's somewhat like what you're talking about, yes, ma'am, but it's a little bit different what we're doing now because of the IRS.
No, she brings up about, obviously, a point. This is not something, remember, this is not an insurance play here. This is, we're going to work with any insurance that's obviously already in place, this is an addition to, and it's going to run parallel without disrupting anything they currently have in place. So once again, this is just an addition to, will not disrupt that.
We appreciate it, and we'll take it under advisement.
All right, thank you.
Item number five, order concurrent with Harrison County Development Commission, acknowledging its support for a ten. its support for a tenure exemption from Advalor for PCC, subject to the completion of a new enterprise in Harrison County. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Have a first and a second discussion? The discussion, all in favor? All right. Item number six, order designated by, designated need board supervisor, chancery clerk, purchase clerk, department head, as a representative in Harrison County to receive proposals for RFP or LED sports lighting for Isaiah Fett. Oh, I didn't see that. Okay. Consent agenda, need a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Good morning. The applicant has requested a revised Magnolia walk subdivision condition to use from two-hundred-and-sixteen lots to two-hundred-and-fifty-five lots. Both the appellant and the applicant are allowed three ten-minute speakers. All exhibits intended for the record shall be marked exhibit A, B, et cetera. The appellant will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal, address any board questions, and then the board will render its decision.
Bobby Heinrich, eighteen oh six, Twenty-third Avenue in Gulfport. I'm here to represent client, my client, Mr. Mee Case. This project is about a twenty-year project. It first started with one-acre lots, and then there was talk about a new treatment plant that was coming in, so he decided he was able to do sewer, but water was not out there, and was told that water would be there soon. Well, nineteen years later, it finally got there, and this, this subdivision was, like I said, started off in one-acre lots, and then he was able to go down to twenty thousand square foot lots, half acre, with sewer and water wells. That's the way the health department approved the project, is with water wells. Well, now, all of those are offline. This is phase one, it's pink right here, and it's in place, it's about ninety, ninety-five percent built out. We've started phase two, we're under construction right now. So with all that being said, and I'm trying to be quick here, this is a, basically, it's a type-one subdivision, which means the minimum lot size, and this is not a conservation subdivision, this is the minimum, the minimum size for a type-one subdivision is seventy-five feet wide, ten thousand square foot minimum. Well, these lots, and this was the original proposed layout that was, that was approved. So if you, when we laid it out, we went back through it, and so what we did is, when we met with the DRC, we took out a lot of the cul-de-sacs, which was a hazard, not a hazard, but anyway, it just made traffic flow go better through this subdivision. So we took out the cul-de-sacs that you'd see here, and here, and there's one over here, and what it did is it, it doesn't drive the people back through phase one, which the neighborhood liked. So anyway, we revised it. The other thing is, there was about four or five two-acre parcels up here that, yeah, they would have water and sewer capable to tie on to, but we're taking those lots and making the ten, the thirteen thousand five hundred square foot lots. So anyway, the difference was thirty-eight lots, thirty-nine lots, difference. The other thing is, we moved the roads to where it would be on top of the ridges here, and they would fall back into a low area, so it worked out better for us. The other difference is, these lots down here, because it started off with one-acre lots, they were about two hundred feet deep, because they were trying to get that one acre, but the average size lot through here is about ninety feet. So the minimum lot size in this new layout is ninety feet by one fifty. We took the fifty, we took fifty feet off the back of the lot, cause it's really, I don't wanna say it's not usable, but it's not needed in this type of development. So we're asking for a, a new conditional use to gain thirty-nine residential lots that are thirteen thousand five hundred square foot minimum. So we went to a planning commission to present this, and everything was going good until the very end, when one said that, well, this is, you know, we compared it to the lot sizes of the Oaks, the Oaks is across the street over here. Well, those are smaller lots, and they, there was a comment made, well, it's not, it doesn't have a golf course. Okay, well, that doesn't mean that we can't have a conditional use change. Another comment was, well, we've already looked at this, and we're not gonna look at it again. And so that, I felt like that wasn't fair comments to deny the increase of the lots here. So, again, we went through DRC, everyone in the, in the room was agreeable to it, didn't see any issues with it. The main thing was, there was not one person at the planning commission meeting against this project. I've personally gone to the homeowners association and presented this, no, no issues. Our covenants are gonna stay the same, the, the style of the homes, these will be all custom homes, none of that has changed, so we're not asking, you know, none of that's gonna change. The only person that was at the meeting was the president of the homeowners association, her name's Ms. Marty Griffin, she was there, she has no issues with this project, and we've met with them constantly, and they know everything about this project. So I'm asking to deny their, 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 I don't wanna say it. No words.
Deny it.
Their approval to the project, because, I mean, I just feel like this is, you know, it's gonna stay in compliance with the neighborhood, it's not changing anything, this will be a beautiful subdivision. I've normally come in here, as some of you probably know, that a lot of developers ask for a lot smaller lots than this, these are, this is about thirty-five hundred square foot bigger than the minimum size that's allowed in a R1 type-one subdivision. So anyway, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I know Mr. Marlin is aware of this, he's not here, but I'm jealous where he's going, but anyway, I did not know that until this morning, but anyway, y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? No. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition?
Hey. How you doing? I'll do my best. My name is Marty Griffin, I live at seven nine two six Magnolia Loop. I have lived in Magnolia Walk for twelve years and served on its board of directors, and with me today also is Lisa Thibodeau, who heads up our architectural review committee. It is a beautiful neighborhood and subdivision, and one of the things that, that makes it that way are the covenants that were originally written to, for all the restrictions and the what-to, and the how, and the sidewalk, the whole nine yards. And we, the ARC put this together in a form, so someone who comes and buys a lot and talks to a builder can say, these are the requirements coming right out of the covenants, verbatim, this is what you have to do to build a home in this neighborhood. Elliott has built in there, Butler's built in there, Garland's built in there, Gus Gamboa has built in there, and they have done a beautiful job. Our concern as a board and architectural review committee is that the covenants that are, that we have, that we abide by, we want to be sure that they are used in every phase going forward. First page of the covenants say that this is for phase one. Well, we've got at least, what, five more phases coming, and the covenants literally protect and create this neighborhood. If you haven't seen it, I encourage you to do it. There are trees, streets, gutter, lights, it's beautifully done. We just wanna make sure that whatever is built there abides by covenants that are equal to or stricter than what we have. And the people who built brand-new homes, people who buy, resell homes in there love it. It's a great school system, but I don't know how to get you or the developer, whoever, to say that those covenants going forward apply to every phase that comes after this. That is the parallel important thing. I get lot size, you know, there are beautiful homes built on small lots, I, my mind did not wadded up about that. I am concerned that they abide by the, the covenants that we have set out in our documents. Does it, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Heinrich?
Anybody else?
Is there anyone else?
Nope. Okay, so we, we agree with that wholeheartedly. So the way to protect that is that, what we have to do, we come back before y'all, the board supervisors, with our final plat. It doesn't go through planning commission, it only goes straight to the board supervisor. And so, at that point, if you wanna make a motion to, to approve the covenant at that time, then that's what we'll do. We'll approve the plat, and, and I've done that before, where you approve the plat and the covenants. I'll have the covenants on the same application.
I have a question for our attorney. Couldn't we do that today?
You could, you can require them to have covenants equal to phase one as part of your approval. I do have a question for Pat. This subdivision appears to have one exit.
No.
Where's the other?
It's actually right here, and that was approved in the first condition.
Sorry, I didn't see it.
Good question, though, cause we've had that issue.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's a big deal.
Not with you, but.
Oh, yeah, it's.
I just didn't see it, it wasn't marked like a road.
Yeah, it does have a secondary exit.
Okay. So if the board wants to require that, you do want to, maybe you remand it back and require them to put the covenants as part of the plan, or you could, today require, I don't know, you don't have the covenants, are they gonna be the same as phase one?
Well, Ms. Marty says that, so each phase will have its own set covenants.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, so it'll be equal or better than those covenants.
We ain't got that in writing, but, I mean, I'm here now, but I may not be here five years.
Can it be on the minutes, or?
It needs to be part of whatever plan, and I assume you have to, the board can do it in the sense that the covenants have to be equal to or better than.
Yeah.
The covenants of phase one. Is phase two got a covenant on it, too?
Yes.
Are those the same as the phase one covenants?
They will be, that was part of the agreement, too.
That's.
I think I'm ready.
All right, I have a motion?
Motion for denial of the denial, contingent that all phases use covenants equal to or stronger than the current original neighborhood walk.
Second.
Is that accurate?
So you're, you're reversing the, the order of the planning commission, which would then grant?
Grant approval, contingent.
Subject to, a contingent that they have covenants equal to phase, equal or better than phase one and two on phases three, four, and five.
And six. It's actually.
Did you say any future? Then the one or two than any future.
That's what you're looking for, correct?
It was five on the way.
Yes, sir, that's what we're looking for, and the thing about it is, for instance,
when Elliott built in there, or any other builder, they took our covenants, they have their own covenants, and I'm, you know, that, they have beautiful neighborhoods, and I don't, I haven't read their covenants, I don't know their covenants, but to your point, in, in writing, verbatim, these covenants right here, because we all know they've built there before. This isn't something new that they don't know about, and most of them, in their higher-end homes, have stricter covenants anyway. I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, that they are verbatim, these covenants are something better.
Okay.
Because I can see Elliott saying, forget it, they're gonna use their own.
And once the covenants are filed on record, they can't use their own, isn't that?
Perfect, that's all.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, I can go back and tell my people.
So we have a first and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item fifteen. Order approving registration fees for tenant collector, Sharon Barnett, and assistant Crystal Mason to attend twenty twenty-four NACA Fall Conference in Biloxi.
Motion. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
County engineer, order approving assumption of thirteen streetlights in Savoy Place subdivision, part two and three.
Motion.
Second. An discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order approving assumption of eleven streetlights in Melvin Air Place subdivisions, part five and six.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order approving the attached ARPA project funding and priority list, adjusting funds between projects as needed, and authorize grant qualification submittals.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
For nineteen, order approving the merger of precinct thirty-one twenty-one, Long Beach Six, one nine one four eight, Commission Road, Long Beach, into precinct three one one one, identified as Long Beach Five.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Fire services, order approving the sole source purchase from Sidens Martin for Home Maturo rescue tools in a total amount of six thousand twenty-eight dollars to be paid from state rebate funds.
Motion. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order authorizing and approving repairs to Bayou Portage Bridge in the amount of fifty-five thousand for damages to the fender system to be repaired by Vice Construction and paid by Gulf Coast Prestress Partners.
Motion. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order approving out-of-state travel as listed.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, zoning, order concurrent with planning commission's decision to approve case filed. Sorry, sorry. Zoning recommends concurrent with planning commission recommendations for cases twenty-four through twenty-nine.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Order concurrent with the road manager on employment as listed and is on file with the payroll clerk and personnel, human resources to file.
Motion. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order concurrent with the county administrator on employment as listed or as on file with the payroll clerk and personnel, human resources.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order waiting, insurance waiting period for Walter Foster.
Motion. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order approving the LoCo purchase from Communications International in an amount of seven thousand six hundred forty-two dollars and seventy cents for an outfit to, for an outfit to the coroner's vehicle.
Motion. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order approving the LoCo purchase from Pops Ferry Sales and Service for an X-Mark Radius lawnmower for building in grounds in the amount of eight thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order accepting the LoCo purchase from Anderson Enterprises in the amount of thirty-one two fifty for one thirty-foot by forty-foot by ten-foot hole barner for Mississippi State extension off County Farm Route.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Order awarding disposal of roofing solutions for re-roofing Biloxi Youth Detention Center in the amount of hundred and seventy-four thousand six hundred based on lowest quote and best proposed tabulations.
Motion. Second.
Can I make a recommendation that the board table this until we are satisfied as to the warranty on this roof? I'm not sure.
The warranty on the roof, is currently on it?
No, the original bid did not have a warranty on it at all. I've been requested, Judy, she contacted the bidder, and they added a warranty in there. It just, it's tightly written on the contract, and I'm just not satisfied with that.
This table, table next week. Make most of the table until next week. Second. Discussion, all in favor? Discussion, all in favor? Thirty-six is tabled, thirty-seven, sheriff?
Mr. President. Total inmate count, seven hundred seventy-two, there are two hundred and five state inmates, twenty-three of those are ready to go, ninety misdemeanors, twenty-one federal inmates, thirty-three juveniles, and that juvenile detention we have seven, and all of those are Harrison County.
Thank you, sir. Order authorizing sheriff's offices sell one Glock Model Twenty-two, serial number YUY four eighty-one.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing sheriff's office sell one Glock Model Twenty-two, serial number YUY four eighty-one.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order approving the service contractor by IcoTech for an extended manufacturer's warranty covering all parts and technical support for the jail, lock and control system at a cost of nineteen thousand six hundred and fifty a year.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order correcting Scrivener's error, order adopted May sixth, twenty twenty-four being agenda item number fifty-five, file number twenty-four dash thirty-three oh four to change the state contract number two eight-two zero 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 seven four one five five for the image runner advance copier.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order approving the sole source purchase for metric solutions for twelve rocket antennas for sheriff office vehicles at a cost of ninety-nine sixty.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order spreading upon the minutes the personnel changes of the sheriff's offices listed on file with payroll clerk, human resources department.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order spreading upon the minutes the following executed documents. Addendum one to the correctional communications services with City Tel Coin Company, and B, fiscal year twenty twenty-three grant award from the State of Mississippi Department of Public Safety.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order adjudicating the board president's signature on closeout documents for fiscal year twenty-one, Stone Garden Grant.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing the acting president to execute closeout documents on Mississippi Leadership Council on Aging Grant for the sheriff's offices triad program.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? County administrator, order authorizing disposal of assets for attached lists and authorizing the inventory clerk to remove the same from the inventory.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order correcting inventory, adding back in items still in use that was previously listed as disposed of, and authorizing the inventory clerk to add back to inventory.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order approving travel as listed.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing reimbursement to road fund with five zero 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 three six zero for the following.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing Liz Tippel A to participate as a volunteer at the MAS Ninety-Fifth Annual Convention.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order declaring the following asset a surplus per attached letter from the Second Circuit Court District Attorney's Office.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order approving payment of claims listed to be paid from the toward account.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order acknowledging receipt of the closeout documents from Mississippi Department of Wildlife, Fisheries, and Parks for Land and Water Conservation Fund, Biloxi River Boat Launch Park, and authorizing the president to execute the following documents.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order adjudicating travel and payment of registration for Robbie Collins, county administrator Angela Thrash, Chancery Clerk for attending Chancery Clerk and County Administrator, Spring Educational Workshop in Jackson, registration cost seventy-five dollars.
Motion.
Second.
My mom's paid out of my fee account, so we can run.
Your name? All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Order approving placement of Department of Public Safety kiosks in the Gulfport Courthouse.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Controller, order authorizing transfer from the general fund in the amount of one hundred and two thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents to Tyland's Long Beach Pavilion and Volleyball Fund.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing the transfer from the LACTF American Rescue Act Fund in the amount of four hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and ten cents to the following funds as match on Tyland's projects.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing the transfer from the BP Oil Sediment Fund in the amount of, it says one point five six five, but we're changing that to one point three million to the Tyland's West Biloxi Boat Launch Fund.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order taking off the table, order authorizing the interfund loans and repayments per the attached schedule.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing the interfund loans and repayment per the attached schedule.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Chancery Clerk, order approving claims docket per Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two, section nineteen thirteen twenty-seven.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order approving payment to the following warrants.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order correcting Scrivener's error on agenda mile, agenda item twenty-three, approved at the board meeting May sixth, twenty twenty-four, with the incorrect amount of two thousand four hundred and thirty ninety-seven, was aired and paid for Brown Mitch and Alexander, invoice number twenty-five six ninety-one, instead of the correct amount of five thousand seven eighty-three sixteen, and authorizing payment of five thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixteen cents to BMA.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order rescinding agenda item number thirty-six on the May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four agenda being payment of twenty thousand nine forty-four ninety-five cents to Waltzer, Weigel, and Garside, Bonnie Carey Spillway billing period two-one twenty-four to four-thirty twenty-four, payable from zero-one-six-one-hundred-five-fifty. It's a duplicate agenda item of the May sixth, twenty twenty-four agenda.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Order authorizing issuance of duplicate warrant for five hundred dollars to fixing the coast.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Number six, seven, order approving payment of the following claims.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order approving issuance of notice to proceed to start contracting company for work, the Harrison County Tradition Fire Association.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Resolution extending congratulations to New Bethel Missionary Baptist Church upon the occasion of its one hundred and fifteenth anniversary.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Motion to consider approving request by First Baptist Church Biloxi celebrating its one hundred and fifty-year anniversary for placement of a marker at the corner of Lamuse and Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order approving the waiver of rental fees for the use of the DeIverville Civic Center by the North Bay Area M.A. Girl Association.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order approving the waiver of rental fees for the use of the County Farm Route Shelter by the Harrison County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order approving the use of the Wool Market Senior Center by Wool Market Prime of Life Senior Center for a rummage sale.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order approving travel June twentieth through June twenty-six for Supervisor Ladner, Quavis, and Powers to meet with potential manufacturing developers in Germany and Poland for Harrison County development purposes, estimated cost eight thousand per person, to be reimbursed to the Harrison County Development Commission.
Motion.
Motion, you can take my name over there.
Okay, so we'll remove Supervisor Quavis's name?
Yeah.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion, all in favor? Order approving the request the city of Biloxi use the county's voting equipment consisting of four voting booths for the special election for Ward Four, June eighteenth.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order adjudicating the employment of Tim Coleman and Bois Holloman and Associates to represent Harrison County and the Harrison County Board of Supervisors and the matters attached.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order spreading on the minutes, letter received from Michael Kavanaugh dated May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four regarding RW Development, Veterans Avenue, Pier.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order accepting the proposal of municipal advisors of Mississippi to provide financial advisory services to Harrison County and authorizing the board president to execute an engagement letter and related documents.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order declaring county-owned property located forty-two oh eight Railroad Avenue in Gulfport a surplus and consider sale of same to Brad Pitt.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
I need to look at that. I'm not aware of this.
I did. It shouldn't have been, Mr. Pittman wrote a letter requesting to purchase the property. And the wording should be, if you opt to sell it, depending on what, if there are no restrictions, which we haven't found yet, would be to declare it surplus.
Right, you have to follow surplus, so you just can't just sell it to one person.
You just can't sell it. So it would, the proper would be if he chose to declare surplus.
So considering, discussing the potential sale of this piece of property, county that needed, the board wants to declare it surplus, then can, then we'll have to follow the surplus statute.
So when do we need a motion? How do you motion declare surplus?
If that's what the board wants, to declare surplus, then you can direct us to determine the proper procedure whether it could be sold to Mr., I'm sure it can be sold correctly, but we may have to advertise it for bids is the problem.
I'll make a motion to declare surplus to get this started.
There are exceptions to that, I don't know if he fits on that conception, so we'll figure that out.
We have the first and the second to declare that as surplus and to proceed with the process. Okay? Any discussion? All in favor? All right, number eighty, order accepting request of Ava Graham and, yeah, I've got to find them real quick, Samantha Walker and Emily Moran to be considered as Harrison County's representative for the Mississippi Deep Sea Fishing Radio Pageant.
We're going to table that. Make a motion to table it.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Do we want to ask these young ladies to write us a little essay, so we can decide back this week?
Yeah, I think one of them or two.
Yeah, I think that we have two applications, and one of them did that. We actually have.
But we don't request it, we just say, do you like this application? She even put a picture.
Yeah, both of them, yeah.
So you want to do a table to be better, right?
Yeah, we'll vote on that next week and choose one. Okay, number eighty-one, order adjudicating and authorizing expenditures as listed, as necessary to advertise and bring into favor, will notice the opportunities, possibilities, and resources of Harrison County, including all forms of advertising, including but not limited broadcast advertising, logo recognition on publicity collateral, other media, and all broadcast printed material and signage, along with the link displayed in Harrison County online.
Motion, second.
Discussion?
Yeah, the only discussion is, I know one of the United in blue, we have the amounts to be involved with, and on that one, I'll make a motion or suggest, or we can talk, be ten thousand dollars.
How much?
Ten, to the contribution to the following officers or public service.
So this, can I merge?
Yeah, sure.
We started this group in two thousand sixteen when the Baton Rouge police officers were ambushed over there, and it started as a spaghetti dinner, that we were just going to try to raise ten thousand dollars to send to the families. Well, it snowballed and a lot of business owners and people along the coast wanted to get involved, and it ended up at the casino, and in a three-month period, we raised almost eighty thousand dollars for those families. And a hundred percent of it went to the families, and it's now five oh one C three, and the group that's involved in this, which Mr. Quavis is now involved in it also, and we're just, we're taking it in a different direction. We're going to honor the five officers that have been killed in line of duty in the last five years here locally, and a scholarship fund will be set up in their name that will repeat each year. And the remainder of the funds, which we're going to do this each year, will go towards first responders that, you know, Lord forbid a tragedy happens, that this group, kind of like Tunnel, Tunnel to Towers, kind of the same thing, will be able to help our local folks, first responders.
Good to hear.
Yeah, I love it. I would do second.
Just make sure you cannot, you can do advertising, because it can't be a sponsor where you get a table and take.
That's correct, yes. All right, any other discussion? All in favor? That's it, so I'll go around, Mr. Holloman.
We do have Lopez versus Harrison County, we have accomplished special record for the board update on that case. With the weight of what, it's not urgent, but if you want to do it today, it will take five minutes.
Does that need to be executive session?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go around and then. Mr. Thrash?
I have just one thing, wanted to make a motion to put a temporary moratorium on any new construction development over thirty acres, giving us the county sixty days to have hire a urban planner to put in stopgap measures. We have seen many, many examples of this county comprehensive plan being old, the ordinances being outdated, basically running amok, we'd say in the sound. So, moratorium for any new construction over thirty acres, giving the county sixty days to put in stopgap measures and work on amending the ordinance and rewriting the comprehensive plan from this day moving forward.
You're saying anything over thirty acres, that's like subdivisions, not if somebody wanted to come in and build on thirty acres, but like development.
Commercial, well, I shouldn't just say commercial, development.
Subdivision.
Should we put the word subdivision? Okay.
Because you got to be careful on this, the, any building permits and argument issue have to be honored.
Yes.
Stop those. Are you doing building permits also, or just subdivision developments over thirty acres and building permits within those existing subdivisions?
Including it all, we need to pump the brakes, give us a chance to do smart growth.
And that affects the life safety of citizens of Harrison County.
Hundred percent.
Issues dealing with fire and all kinds of water sewer.
Anything that is going forward, so I understand you correctly, anything that is already approved or has a green light, that wouldn't stop, it would just be any new applications, is what you're saying, for subdivisions over thirty acres for the next sixty days, until we can get some ordinances rewritten?
Yes.
Okay, make sure we're clear, because this is, the board has the authority to enter a moratorium to prevent threats to life, safety, things of that nature. A sixty-day period is a reasonable period, a ton, or we, for instance, today, we reverse the planning commission's setback to subdivision, is that subdivision going forward, it looked like it was more than thirty acres, may I, I don't know, I didn't look at that closely.
That was approved by us before I did this, and I think Marla was finally asked.
Does everything that's already approved go forward, this new development that has not been approved?
Oh, yes, I said.
Oh, yes, I said a urban planner, should I include a motion in this to hire an urban planner, or should we wait till, do it next?
You can do that now, you can do it separately, just so.
Or let's do it second.
Yeah, so I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So now make a motion to hire an urban planner to help us tackle this, I don't want to just give him sixty days, it could take six months, two years, but he's, you know, the people I've spoken to said they can put in stopgap measures now in that sixty days to prevent the massive flooding and everything, trees all being wiped out with no concern, so that's just the wording, hire an urban planner for the life of the creation of ordinances, or just urban planner?
An urban planner, if I had any other related entities, it's gotta come back and get approved by the board anyway, all you're doing is authorize to go look for one right now.
Right.
So, do you have an urban planner in mind?
I've spoken to three since Friday, and so I do have one that we're gonna, Robbie and I are gonna meet with tomorrow, who was most interested and said he would definitely tackle it.
Okay, so I have a motion, second, discussion, all in favor?
Always ask, he thinks, he says he's an expert.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that all?
Yes.
I don't have anything?
I'm good.
Sure? Okay, so I need a motion to go into executive session?
I'm gonna draft an order on the moratorium, and I'll send it, go back and see, we'll see if that's what you, what the board wants.
Motion, second.
So it's on Lopez versus Harrison County for the record, I'm gonna stay in here, I won't take very long.
Okay.